7:30, we'll call the regular City Council Meeting of December 18th, 2017 to order. We do have a quorum, let's please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda, approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law. I'm here and place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
With the additions.
With the additions.
With the additions.
The additions of Q, R, and S.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions of Q, R, and S.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Liljgren. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apo, same sign. Motion carries approval of the minutes, a copy of the minutes for the special work session meeting of December 4th, 2017, and the regular City Council Meeting of December 4th, 2017, are enclosed. What is the wish of the council?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apo, same sign. Motion carries approval of the bills. Checks number 97649 through 97730 totaling $138,932.83. What is the wish of the council?
So moved.
Do you approve?
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Gushak, to approve the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apo, same sign. Motion carries awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. We got a presentation, retirement, Brian Anderson, volunteer fire fighter. Mayor?
Okay, Brian and Chief, if you guys would meet me up front by the podium. Okay, this reads, "City of Little Falls Certificate of Appreciation is hereby granted to Brian Anderson for outstanding performance and lasting contributions to the community of Little Falls through his many years of service on the Little Falls Fire Department ordered December 18th, 2017." And from what I understand, that's 25 years of service.
Five years.
Well, Brian, I want to thank you very much for your commitment, all your hard work, and for being a great asset to our community and our fire department.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor.
Chief, you'd like to say a couple of words, I know?
We went through this already once, you know. Brian, we've got some big shoes to fill with his vacancy. I've been on it 33 years now, and Brian's been on it for 25, you know. He will be missed, and his knowledge and everything else is really going to be missed. So I want to thank you too, again.
Thank you.
And we've got some big shoes to fill.
Wait, wait, Chief, Mr. Mayor. Genie, do you want to get in on that photo app?
No, I'm fine.
You're good? You're good? Okay.
I'm just very proud of the Little Falls Fire Department, and it's just a sacrifice that these people do for our community, and it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and you never know when they leave. So just thank you very much, Brian, and you're a wonderful husband, and Mike, you're a great chief, and thank you to all the Little Falls Fire Department. Thank you.
Good job, Mike.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Airport Commission Minutes, October and November 2017 received. Animal Control Report, November 2017 received. Heritage Preservation Commission Minutes, December 2017 received. Housing Redevelopment Authority Minutes, November 2017 received. Public Works Report, November 2017 received. Reschedules, regular City Council meetings, 2018. Legal holidays, affirm. Wastewater Treatment Facility Report, November 2017 received. Water Treatment Facility Report, November 2017 to receive. What is the wish of the council on the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Canofla, to approve the consent. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apo, same sign. Motion carries public hearings and lettings, we have none. Old business, ordinance number four, seven series, amend city chapter code seven, street and sidewalk regulations, and chapter 11, land use regulations, zoning introduced on 12-4. Adopt. Greg?
Yeah, ordinance number four pertains to small cell technology. A lot of these requirements are handed down to us from the state. In order for us to regulate this, we need to pass this ordinance to be able to regulate the particulars of these small cells.
What's the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve ordinance number four. Discussion? Hearing none, ordinance, call a roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries.
Signage request, Zion Lutheran Church, approve. Greg?
Yeah, the city received a request from Zion Lutheran Church to move two of the handicap parking stalls from Fifth Street Northeast to Third Avenue Northeast. Because they're not adding any handicap stalls or anything like that, we are recommending approval tonight on that request.
What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Liljgren, second by Alderman Hercock, for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apo, same sign. Motion carries new business, interview committee recommendation, Matt Street, Assistant Wastewater Supervisor, accept the point.
Roughly a month ago, we received the resignation or retirement letter of Dick down at the wastewater treatment plant. We interviewed two individuals for that position. They were both from within the city of Little Falls. We are recommending hiring Matt Street as the new Assistant Wastewater Supervisor beginning January 1, or with the effective date of January 1, I should say.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to appoint.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apo, same sign. Motion carries memorandum of agreements, health insurance, unions, city administrator, John?
Yes, as a reminder, in our union contracts that we had negotiated for last year and proved so effective for this year in 2018, we had a rider in that, in those contracts that if our health insurance premiums increased by more than 7 percent, that we would renegot- well, go into negotiations to discuss potential increase to those, our fixed contribution towards those premiums. They went up 16.11 percent. We did need to negotiate that and came to a middle position where our fixed contributions will increase to $1,215 for the family coverage and $575 for the single coverage. Those would be pretty comparable, not quite half of what the actual total increase is. So the employees are assuming a little bit more, more than half of that increase.
Do we need to approve each one individual or all of them together?
You can do them all together if you'd like.
Yeah, the agreements are uniform.
All identical.
Yeah.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve for all four unions.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Councilmember Canofla, for approval. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Should I abstain on this?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll be abstaining.
Well, you're getting insurance now, too.
Aye.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apo, same sign. Motion carries with the mayor abstaining. Planning Commission Recommendation, variance, Aaron and Becky Olson, accept, approve.
At the December Planning Commission Meeting, we had a number of public hearings for Mr. Olson, a property at Fifth Avenue and Second Street Northeast. They are looking at doing an addition on the front of the building. It's about 18 inches out past where this front part is at right now, as well as a bathroom addition on the backside of the property. Right now, there are three setbacks that they'd be looking at getting a variance from, the front yard here because of this 18-inch addition, the side yard because five feet is technically the requirement here, they'd be having it in line with their current garage, and then the rear yard setback as well. So that's the billing addition that they are looking for, and the planning commission is recommending approval on those. The other variance request is an after-the-fact variance request for the fence. So from this point, here is where the fence is currently located, where the dotted line is coming to a point. The proposal is to have this diagonal section come six feet back from the corner, and then that would be six feet tall. The area right here at the corner would be two and a half feet, so that would meet the site triangle requirements for the city. Any questions on that? Again, the planning commission is recommending approval on that as well.
What does it mean to site if we have a 10-foot?
The numbers come out to about 5.5 feet in terms of distance back from the property line. So to be conservative, we went with 10 feet in the city code. The exact numbers are, you know, six feet, and so that's where, you know, the compromise comes into play. With this being a four-way stop, where the roadway is at in relation to the right-of-way line, there's a number of factors that come into play with that.
So then why don't we change our code to 5.5 feet if that's what we need? Why don't we just set it for 10?
Well, it's going to be different if this curb line is closer to the right-of-way, then that's going to push it back. So there's some buffer in there to allow for that center line of the road to shift.
So isn't property line a property line?
The property line is a property line, but what you're looking at when you're on the, when you're in a vehicle back here, you're looking not necessarily at the property line here, you're looking at what's coming on that adjoining street. So that's why, you know, it could, it could shift. 10 is a good catch-all number, but in this particular instance, right here, six point, or six feet is the minimum to go for the site triangle.
I thought 25 was the catch-all number, and we reduced it down to 10, didn't we?
We reduced it.
Now we're down to six.
25 is where it's uncontrolled, so if there's no stop sign on any section, 10 feet if it's controlled, meaning there's two or more stop signs at an intersection, and that's, those are the current numbers in the city code, yes.
I just wonder if in the future, we're going to have a lot of people contest this and say, well, you allowed six foot for this person, why not us? So where does our 10-foot really, what kind of clout does it really have? You know, I like the idea when you set ordinances that we stick to them. I mean, I understand their situation and everything. I wasn't at the meeting, sorry, but I'm not in agreement with this. I think, you know, to be fair to all, we should keep it at 10 feet. We put that ordinance in there, we should stick with it.
But we'd also given them the permit to begin with, right where it is.
And that was our fault. So are we doing this just to save our own mistake?
No. Well, the fence has to be moved anyhow. So if you move it back six feet, or you move it back 10 feet, so you're saving four feet of not moving it back. So it's going to cost us the same to move it, so if we move it and put it in the right spot, or if we move it and put it halfway, we're going to pay to do it. We must pay and do it, and do it right. Do where it needs to be. Why make a variance on our first request?
But aren't we also looking at how it fits on a lot that we wouldn't allow anybody to build on anymore?
Right, but this is a fence. It's not the house. I have no issues with them building a house. This is a fence that's on the corner. It's nowhere near the house.
It still has to do with the size of the lot where they live, and making it-
Yeah, they pay property taxes on that smaller lot than everybody else does too, so.
I'm okay with the rest of it. I think, you know, to put that ad on, what is it, 18 inches there, when they already have a building that's out that far, that's nothing to me. I mean, it's not really making it, changing it that much.
Correct.
And then the other variance, you know, we've allowed variances for putting additions and add-on, you know, setting things closer to property lines and I'm fine with that.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we consider the addition variance separate from the fence.
I have no problem with the building.
With that, I'd make a motion that we approve the addition variance.
I think it's broken out in the-
What's on the agenda is one item.
Yeah, that's one.
Probably put in the request, it's on, I think there's two, but it's just one on the agenda.
Yeah.
So you're making a motion to approve the variance to the building request?
For the addition.
For the addition? Do you have a second on that? So I got a motion to approve the building variance by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion on that portion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apo, same sign. Motion carries. Now the fence. Variance. Do you have a motion for approval?
Yes.
Have a second for discussion? Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Liljgren, to approve after-the-fact variance for the fence. Discussion?
Well, I like to typically look at what the recommendation of our planning commission is, and it's not that I take guarantee I haven't held fast every recommendation they made. And when I saw, originally read this and saw the recommendation, the 3-1 recommendation with Essie abstaining, you know, then you start to think, okay, these are the people that approved it. And with Greg's presentation, you know, to me, after-the-fact almost implies that somebody put up a fence and then came for permission later, and that we know isn't the case.
Correct.
That they had received permission to do this or a permit, and then it was an error. So whether it's, and the other part of me is the fact that, you know, we made these changes so we would have less variances, and that's what it was all about. So I'm kind of torn on this, and so I guess the one thing maybe I'm overweighting is that it comes down as a recommendation from our planning commission, so.
Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, I agree with that, and the dissenting vote on that from Rob is in the neighborhood. So were you at the meeting, Mr. President?
Nope, I was not. I had another meeting that night.
I'd like to know what his concerns about that are. I tend that we have these people volunteer for different boards and commissions, and I hate to, you know, disregard what they have to say.
I know after the vote, Rob didn't elaborate why he voted against it.
And there were three members absent that night. Joe wasn't there either.
Yes, you're right, yeah.
I mean, you know, to have it and going on that is something the mayor said too. What if you would have put that fence up and then came in for a variance after the fact? How would we look at it? We probably would have denied it because somebody put up a fence against the ordinance we already had. So that part of it, I, you know, I just think we should stick to what the ordinance is, and we worked hard recently. That's only been approved just not that many months ago. Go with that 10-foot, and we went through that and hashed over it many sessions, and already we're giving up, or contemplating doing a variance for it, and I'm just not in agreement with that.
I would, Tony, any thoughts on this as far as are we throwing ourselves under the bus by approval, or do we have the right in variance where with similar conditions where Greg couldn't make a case for it, we would be potentially in a courtroom?
Well, I mean, you may always be in the courtroom, but the bottom line is, the point of a variance is you're asking to vary from the ordinance. You don't want to, and that's correct, you don't want to start doing these things regularly just on a whim. I think the planning commission has asserted, you know, a fair basis for why this one is distinguishable. Doesn't mean you won't have other people come in and ask for the same thing, but you have to apply your standards. It looks like the planning commission applied the appropriate standards. They issued their findings, now it's up to you whether or not you want to confirm or deny those findings, but just because you approve one variance doesn't mean you have to approve every variance that comes in the door. That's the point of the findings. And you're going to have variance requests, I don't care what ordinance you put in, people are going to come in and ask for variances. So you don't want to start getting to the point where every time somebody comes in, you agree that whatever, the 10-foot setback is dumb and we're going to give a variance consistently, then you need to go back and change your ordinance like we did. But even having done that, you're still going to have times and circumstances where you need to consider deviating from that. So it's your decision, but no, you certainly have a basis to do it if you wish to do it, and they have what appears to be adequate findings to support it.
Well, one thing is you're going to think, would we give this variance if they come in, if that fence was not there? If they come in and pull the permit on that, Greg would tell them, no, you got to be 10 feet back, because we just, we just did our ordinance, and we messed up, and we're going to pay for it. That's why we instructed staff to work with them on moving it back, and now we're moving it back half the way, so it's still costing us the same, and we're not getting into our ordinance requirements, so.
It's probably not going to cost us the same, because it's not going to take as much labor to move it six feet as it would take 10 feet. It's a four-way stop, not a two-way stop, so it's more than just a, what would qualify for a controlled intersection.
Right.
And I realize on a smaller property, you pay less property taxes, it doesn't make what you have any less valuable, it probably makes what you have for a yard more valuable to you. That's why they would like the fence at that other location, so that they have more usable yard, which makes sense to me.
We have a motion on the table for approval? With no further discussion, call a roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
No.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
No.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
No.
Carries on a 4-3 vote. Excuse me, just wait a minute.
Absent vote is a no vote, ain't it?
No, absence only a no vote on ordinances and resolutions. So this is not an ordinance or a resolution, so then it should carry. I believe it carries.
So motion carries?
Yes.
New business continued, planning commission recommendations, ordinance number five, amend city chapter seven and 11, language and conditional use requirements.
Ordinance number five basically does some cleanup work in that chapter 11 and chapter seven. When we updated chapter seven, excuse me, chapter 11, the codifiers noticed some inconsistencies in terms of what, where things were referencing and that type of stuff. So we cleaned those up, as well as adding the floodplain maps into the city ordinance as well. So it's basically cleanup work and adding some floodplain maps to the ordinance.
So we just need a motion to introduce?
Correct.
Do you have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion.
It's been introduced by Councilmember Gushak. Then the other variance are, we have back there from the planning commission, under three, for the skateboards and whatever else.
That was chapter seven 11, I believe.
Correct.
Yes.
That the-
That's all included in this ordinance number five.
In this here one?
Yep.
Okay. And a motion introduced 5A?
So moved.
Been introduced by Councilmember Hanson. Resolution 2017-77, establish 2018 fee schedule.
You have before you tonight, resolution 2017-77, which would establish fees for 2018. There, the resolution is redlined so that you can see the difference in the fees. Not many changes. Airport commission, or the airport hangar rentals, those increase by CPI per their contract. And I believe, other than that, the planned unit development master plan increases, and the small cell technology permits are in there, along with some changes under zoning letters and zoning requirements. I believe the golf course fees will be coming to the council at a later date, correct?
Yes, yep. What is the wish of the council on resolution 2017-77?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Hanson, for approval of resolution 2017-77. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2017-78, option A, B, or C, establish water, wastewater, garbage, and recycling rates for 2018. John?
You have before you the proposed water, wastewater, stormwater, garbage, and recycling rates for utility billing, and it would be effective January 20th. The increases that we do propose are in water, moving the basic rate from 1325 to 1365 per month. With that, there's increases as well to the multiplier effects for the larger meters. So those total rates are also included in the resolution. We do have usage rates in water that increase. This is a 1% increase to each of the unit rates, so it's actually pretty, pretty mini- pretty small total rate. It actually goes up only one cent in the first thousand gallons. I think at the most, it's averages up to two cents. So those are pretty small rates, but it stays in line with, to keep our operating costs covered by those utilization rates. Wastewater actually is the fir-, we will keep this the same. If you recall, the last two years, we've had $5 increases in the per-month charge the last two years. That was to get us to a point where we were collecting sufficient amounts to cover our existing debt service and capital improvement costs for the year. We have achieved that success and are proposing to keep those, that, those rates the same. And it should be, hopefully, with our work and the future wastewater treatment plant renovations, by the time those debt services are coming on, if we are able to secure an adequate grant funding, we should be able to incorporate those increases without having to significantly raise that rate again. Hopefully, it would be sufficient, but that's something we'll have to analyze at the time. I believe that we will have sufficient time over the course of next year to know where we position, where we will be positioned in 2019 when that work begins, and whether or not we're going to need to start raising that rate to accommodate the debt service on the renovations. With the recycling, that was in the contract to go up to $3.40 for 2018. Finally, then, the storm, or it's not final, but stormwater also stays the same, not seeing any impact to that, and I don't believe we had any other impacts to our surcharge on the wastewater. With the garbage, what- With the garbage, what we are, what I do have is a few options for a proposal, and you can see below what the current rates are and what the, what those different options are in terms of effective increases. Option A increases the weight proportionally for the can size with the average or middle ground being 70 cents towards the weight charge, and then flat 55 cents for each of the, each of the other size options. So we have the 32 gallon, 64 gallon, and then any combination in between above that. So it would go up $1.08 for the first smallest can option and $1.25 for the next largest. With that, we would have, it has been agreed upon by the haulers that that rate would be held flat for 2018 and all of 2018 and all of 2019. If this were, if that were approved, that would be signed agreement into the contract. Otherwise, based on discussion from our budget meetings, we do have the two other options. Option B is just strictly a proportionate with the 64-gallon container getting a 35-cent adjustment on the weight, and then the other sizes getting a proportionate one based on anticipated weight increase. That option is to, if we were to change the weight, based on the evidence that I've received for three months' worth of collections, 70 cents would be adequate to cover the haulers' shortfall in weight charges at the landfill, the tipping fee charges at the landfill. And that wasn't because of the tipping fee charges increase, it was actually due to a calculation where we were accounting for more customers than we're contributing actual weight into the system. So our averages were skewed low in how much weight we assumed was going by each customer per month. So this would at least give us some collection for that weight recovery, at which time, after what I would assume to be a year of collections or what we deem reasonable, we would readjust and evaluate what the actual tipping fee cost would be, and I would recommend that we would be reimbursing the haulers for that shortfall for that budget year. The third option is just to keep the rates the same, based on the fact that the contract was recently signed or executed beginning in October, after many months of negotiations and back and forth in terms of where we would be in total weight.
And the tipping later.
So if there, I guess at that, I will leave it to the council for a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer a motion to adopt resolution 2017-78, utilizing option A. I don't like it, but I think the stability of rates going through 2019 outweighs my angst about it being raised so soon.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion, got a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka, to approve resolution 2017-78A. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
No.
Gushak?
No.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Kerry's.
Resolution 2017-79, accept feasibility report and call for public hearing, Fifth Street Your stopwatch has started.
All right. This evening, we've got a number of street projects that we're looking at calling public hearings for. We're looking at Fifth Street Northwest. One block was a petition project and one block was a staff-initiated portion of it. You'll notice on there, I've got petition slash staff initiated. After we reviewed some of the things, we up scoped the project to include the sanitary sewer as well, and I'll show you that in a little bit. That's why it's now staff-initiated. The Eighth Street East, going from Trunk Highway 27, which is also First Street Northeast all the way down to Fifth Avenue Southeast, and then Edgewood Drive, that was a petition project to bring about a two-and-a-half-block stretch of services to an individual that wants to build in that area. And then Front Street, as we talked about latter last meeting. So looking at Fifth Street Northwest, to give you an idea where that's at, this is the Fourth Avenue. We reconstructed this stretch last year, and we reconstructed Fifth Street Northwest back in 2016, I believe it was. So right now, we've got a two-block stretch here that is gravel, another two-block stretch over here that is gravel, and then the rest of this around here is blacktop. Sixth Avenue is gravel as well. So we'd be looking at essentially completing that segment to blacktop and getting the utilities up to par. So the petition was from Third to Fourth Avenue Northwest. The water main, as you can see, was constructed in 1977, and then the sanitary sewer was done in 1964. Being that age, I really wouldn't have looked at that sanitary sewer, but because we had the sanitary sewer camera, that was kind enough for NJPA to grant us funds to purchase that. I had the guys go ahead and televise that, and you'll see that coming up here. It was actually pretty alarming in my mind. The next stretch, which was staff-initiated, was between Fourth and Fifth. Again, it's a gravel road. The water main was put in in '91, and the sanitary sewer was 2004. So looking here, we see a hairline crack coming on the top of the pipe. This is a service line that was basically cut in to the sanitary sewer pipe. This is a stretch where somebody actually took a saw, they cut the top off of the pipe and then placed it back on when they were done. I'm not sure what they did in that area because you can see there's no service lateral going around, but obviously, the top of the pipe was cut off. Both of these areas are going to be an issue with INI, and you'll see that coming up here in a little bit. This one was the most disturbing to me. You can see the pipe, it has cracks all over the place. Looking at it, I don't know what's keeping that pipe together, other than the soil around it, because there's so many cracks in through there. It's fractured every which way you can imagine. Closer look up at it. This is the televising footage from the camera. You can see up on the top here of the screen, this is inflow or infiltration, excuse me, quite a bit of groundwater that's coming into that sanitary sewer, which then comes down to our waste plant, which then we need to treat. So by doing this project, we'll get rid of all of this here, which then would help eliminate some of the flow that we see at our waste plant.
So if it's leaking in, obviously, it's leaking out too, huh?
Potentially. You know, in that case, there's more pressure on the outside than on the inside. So you, most of the time, you see water coming in as opposed to out, unless the groundwater is quite a ways away from it. On the west side, it's going to be coming in just because of the high water table. You've got pressure pushing in. Whoops.
Yeah, one spot's pretty bad. Does that mean somebody probably broke the pipe when they put the thing together?
This one right here? No, there's no service lines around that area, so I don't know.
I mean, when they did the project, they dropped that one or something?
Maybe in compaction when they constructed it. That's potentially what could have happened, you know, back in the '74 timeframe. But again, you can see there's a lot of water coming around that pipe as well, so.
They probably got the busted load.
It's probably been busted ever since it went in or very shortly thereafter.
Eggshells put together.
Now, you've seen the bad and the ugly. This is what a good pipe looks like. You'll see on the bottom, you know, the channel here is constant. It's pretty narrow, it's constant, it doesn't go up and down in terms of the water level. When it fills the pipe up halfway and then empties again, that's when you start getting segs. That's where the solids settle out, and that's where you start getting plugs. This is between Fourth and Fifth. The pipe was put in, I think I said it was '97, and so we've got televising of that, the good sewer. We're not looking at replacing any of that, but I wanted to put that in there since you've seen all these bad. This is a good section that we've got. This unfortunately is at Fifth Avenue and Fifth Street. This is a concrete manhole, and it's a precast one, relatively new, as you can see by the orange steps up there. There's a lot of pressure on these pipes, and I wish they wouldn't be turning around as much, but that's the water spraying in where the sanitary pipe comes into the manhole. There's so much pressure, it's squirting all the way across the manhole with that groundwater, just to show how much is actually, how much pressure is actually on there. It's like a garden hose squirting across there. So the improvements, we're looking at improving the sanitary sewer between Third and Fourth. We're paving the stretch with a 32-foot urban section with gravel and aggregate base. Water services out to the property lines where needed. There's a couple of properties that do not have services currently or they're old clay tiles, so we'd be replacing them with PVC pipe out to the property line. Looking at the costs, option number one is between Third and Fourth Avenue. That comes in at $127,000. Option number two, which is between Fourth and Fifth to complete that segment, that's at $92,000. The reason this one is less expensive is because we don't have to touch the sanitary sewer in that stretch. It's in good shape. Looking at the funding of it, the city's picking up about a little over 60%. You know, option two is 61%, option one is 67%. I fully expect these numbers to change as we get bid prices. These were based off of what our assessments were in 2017, and so we didn't adjust them based on that. So once we get new bid prices, we will adjust those accordingly. We've seen the assessment rates before. Again, these are the same as what were in 2017. I fully expect these to get adjusted once we bid out the project. So the next steps on all of the projects, we are looking at having a public hearing on January 16th, if the council approves it tonight, advertise and get approval for a bid opening on March 7th with construction in the summer of '18. That wraps it up for Fifth.
Any questions?
Do you ever, after a job's completed, go through and televise it just to make sure they did it right?
On all of them, yes, yep. We have that as part of our bid items, is we televise the sanitary sewer to verify there's no rocks protruding into there, there's no segs or anything like that. So every single one of them gets televised. Now that we have the camera, we'll be able to do some of that ourselves, but for all of the projects in recent years, we've been doing that, yes.
Hearing none. What's the wish of the council on resolution 2017-79?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushak, second by Mayor Zilka, to approve resolution 2017-79. Any discussion?
Well, this is a project, Mr. President, that I voiced before, that we just did Fourth Avenue this year, so initially, I was against calling for the feasibility study itself. I can see the needs that are there. We'd just like to see us be a little bit better at planning. You know, now we're doing a couple more blocks right where we just were and ready to go. So I don't, is there something different we can do about notifying the residents? Maybe they want to, upon being notified there's a petition, you know, a petition to do more? And in fact, Eighth Street Southeast, which is by me, needs it. I would be, would have been willing to push that back a year, actually, if it would have made sense to do this project all at once and disrupt that neighborhood for one year. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Kerry's.
Resolution 2017-80, Fifth Street Northwest, just the other?
This is the second block of that stretch, yes.
Second section. What is the wish of the council on that?
Make a motion to adopt.
Got a motion by Alderman Hercock, second by Councilmember Liljegren, for approval of resolution 2017-80. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Kerry's.
Resolution 2017-81, Eighth Street Southeast.
Eighth Street Southeast, adjacent to our project that we completed this year. We completed about five blocks in 2017 on Seventh Street. We're bumping it over one block, completing Eighth Street, which is going to extend all the way up to 27. You remember on our Seventh Street project, we did not do that first block because that was recently reconstructed, but we are looking at doing this six-block stretch here. This is a staff-initiated project, and so we are looking at a number of reasons why we're looking at it, the age of the water main and the sewer pipe, looking at sewer backups and water main freezes, and so looking at addressing some of those concerns as well as the condition of the road to increase or to improve that. Looking at the televising reports, couple pictures here. It's typical, we've got roots in just about every joint there. You'll see that coming up here in the video. Again, there's a number of roots here. I can go on if you want. You'll see, here's some on this side, there's some up there. You'll also notice upcoming, I believe, here shortly, there's a service line that's installed there, but it's actually protruding into the manhole. So even though on the top, it's not as bad, you still don't like things protruding into the manhole because that's where stuff seems to get caught up and collect. That's supposed to be flush with the pipe itself, so we'd like to get that taken care of as well. You know, looking at this picture over here on the left, this is a picture indicating that there's a sag. You can see where the water line is at compared to the most of the time. It's usually down quite a bit farther. We'll see that in a video here shortly. This is actually a hole in the top of the pipe. It's just a void. You can see the roots starting to come in there, but this is chipped away for whatever reason. It was a defect in the pipe, fell in, and now there's nothing holding the soil up in that area. Looking at this video here, illustrating how bad the segs actually are, to give you an idea, the camera's in the middle of the pipe. This is an eight-inch pipe. As we go forward, it's going to dip underneath water. They'll start to tip it up so that you can actually keep it out of the water, but as you see there, we're getting into the water where it's half-full of sewage, which decreases the capacity of that pipe greatly. So problems are going to occur in that location. We'd like to get those taken care of. Again, another picture here. This is a root ball, basically plugging up the entire stretch of that pipe. The improvements, very similar to what we've completed on Seventh Street. We'd be looking at a 10-inch sanitary sewer. We'd assess at the 8-inch because that's what the residents need there. We'd be looking at an urban section, again, 32 feet wide with 5 inches of aggregate base and 3 and 1/2 inches of battuuminis. Looking at the cost, this is by far the largest portion of the cost that we're looking at doing in 2018. We're at $946,170. The city would be picking up roughly 46% of the cost. Again, I expect these numbers to change when we get bid prices and moving forward from there. We've seen these assessment rates, so we're, again, looking for a January 16th public hearing, and then March 7th, we're planning on opening up bids.
Questions?
If they need an 8-inch pipe, why are we putting a 10-inch one in?
Provide capacity upstream. So we get sanitary sewer down through there. It doesn't make sense to charge those residents for the larger capacity when the larger capacity is to serve other folks upstream of that. So we call that oversizing of the pipe. And occasionally, we do that with water main as well, like going up to the water towers. We'll have a 16-inch pipe going up to the water tower to get the volume of water we need, but the residents don't need that large of a pipe or the end user doesn't, so that's why we don't charge them for that larger pipe.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. What's the wish of the council on resolution 2017-81?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Alderman Hercock, for resolution 2017-81. Any discussion? Hearing none, resolution, call a roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kerry's.
Resolution 2017-82, Edgewood Road?
Yep. The feasibility for Edgewood Road is basically to bring sanitary sewer and water services to build a house as well as part of a business in that area, and so we looked at two options, bringing it down the east-west leg of Edgewood Road as well as the north-south stretch. When we looked at the north-south stretch, it is longer, so it's more expensive, and we're not able to get the sanitary sewer all the way down to this particular property. We run out of depth with gravity at about this location here, and so, the only feasible way to serve them is off of Riverwood on this east-west stretch of Edgewood. So, again, it was a petition project. The pavement's in decent condition, but we don't have any sanitary sewer or water main in that location. We can see that from the pictures here. The proposed improvements, we're looking at 8-inch sanitary sewer, 8-inch water main. We're going to continue to have a rural section, which means the stormwater will continue to go where it currently goes. There's small swales in there, so if the water is ponding there now, it's going to continue to pond there after construction is completed. Looking at the costs, the project cost for this stretch is $243,600 after, you know, contingency and engineering. Looking at the funding, the city would be picking up roughly 44%. And again, I expect those numbers to change once we get bid prices and assessment rates. So, looking at the assessment rates for a 26-foot-wide rural section, we're at just over 543 for the side footage. Most of that is in the front footage, which is at 1086. You'll notice that is quite a bit less than the rest of it. That's because of the curb and gutter. That's not needed in that stretch, which does add quite a bit to the cost. Looking at a public hearing, again, January 16th, we would open these bids with the rest of the projects on March 7th if the council approves.
So, this is just to get sewer and water down for one person that wants to build a house, or?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. What's the wish of the council on resolution 2017-82? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Gushak, second by councilmember Hanson, for resolution 2017-82. Any discussion?
Well, I'm just wondering if we have many options, right? If we have somebody that has a lot that wants to build, what's the option? Is put the utilities in now or have them go well and septic within the city limits?
Correct. Those are the two options.
Which we want to get away from.
Correct.
Does it make any sense, if you go around the corner where the sewer line has to end coming from the north, does it make any sense to go up on this end to there?
The stretch here?
Or can we hook onto that later if we need to?
We'll make provision. So, when we end our sanitary here, we'll stub it out. So, there's a stick of pipe out the manhole so we can connect up to it.
So, if somebody who's just one lot north of them wants to build next year?
Correct.
It would just be that?
They can still be able to do that. Now, there'll be some street restoration that'll have to occur because you're going to have to dig down to it. You're going to disturb the pipe. But, again, looking at the rates, it was $10 a foot, so it's not a whole lot in terms of additional expense. That's why we didn't look at doing the rest of this stretch, simply because right now, we've got one individual that's looking at extending it out to there, and we haven't had any requests by the rest of these individuals for those services at this point in time. So, we didn't feel the need to put forth the investment yet in this stretch if there's not the need or the desire for the city sewers and water it.
So, it's their seven or eight along Edgewood there that would be stubbed out to?
Three, four, five, six. Yes. Yep.
So, they wouldn't pay assessments until they decide to hook up?
That would be what we would recommend. Again, that's a council decision, but we've done that in other areas of the Riverwood area as well as DeRozers recently. It was 2015, I think we did that.
But, if one of their wells or septic goes bad next year, then?
True.
We don't have to give them a permit to fix it. They?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call or roll, please.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Handfler?
Yes.
Lilljegren?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2017-83, Front and Wood Street?
The project we're looking at right now is Wood and Front Street. As you recall, back in the summer of 2017, we placed some fill down in this area in preparation of using this stretch as the detour for the Trunk Highway 27 project in 2019. In addition to that, and we'll get into it, what we're looking at, there's some concern with the, and it's staff's concern, with the way that this is placed down here in terms of the, I'll call it the retaining wall for that parking area. The proposal is to move this stretch of Wood Street and 1st Avenue South, or Front Street, over so that it reduces or increases the speed along through here, because this right now is not a 25 or 30 mile an hour speed. If you go down that stretch, you realize that you've got to slow down quite a bit. And if we are going to have that as potentially a detour route, we need to be able to make that accommodating to passenger vehicles as well as semi-vehicles that are looking at deliveries to the downtown area. So, existing, the pavement is good. There's no doubt. The water main is a 6-inch. We're not sure of the age on that. 8-inch sanitary sewer, again, we don't know what the age is. It really doesn't serve anything in that, on the Front Street portion of it, but on Wood Street, it does. We're looking at replacing one block or half a block on Wood Street. The horizontal and vertical curves do not meet the traffic speeds in through there, so that's a concern. And the existing retaining wall appears just to be concrete slabs stacked on one another, and I'll show you that in a bit. This here is poured-in-place concrete by the dam, but then you look at this stretch here, it looks like it's just slabs of concrete that are placed on there. I mean, you can see there's chunks of concrete in through here, but this is the area that's a concern, at least of mine, having the traffic that close to it, the parking that close to it. I'd like to get that farther away and have this more of a green space so we don't have those loads on that retaining wall. And so, those two things are kind of the factors that drove the feasibility or the staff initiation of this particular project. Again, looking south at the dam, this curve right here is too sharp in terms of being able to meet any sort of design speed. We're looking at flattening that out. So, right in here is where we would come through, and then we would curve it over on the other side of those trees where the embankment is currently at. So, the proposed improvements include sanitary sewer on Wood Street for a half a block to get that replaced. We'd abandon the sanitary on Front Street. The service would be stubbed out. We'd abandon the 6-inch that currently runs through the park, and we would place the services out to the property line, a 32-foot section around that stretch by the This would also allow for the improvements to be used for detour route during 2019 and potentially for the sale and redevelopment of that adjacent property that we own. Looking at the costs, when all is said and done, we're looking at $288,492. Assessments would come in at 73%, being the city's share, the rest being assessed. Now, this number I'll be upfront with is arbitrarily high because we assess ourselves. So, because we own most of the property along this stretch right here, we do assess ourselves for that. Now, if we sell this property, we'd be able to recoup some of that through the sale of it, but that 26% does include assessing ourselves for that project. To give you an idea, the water main currently runs basically right through the middle of this stretch here. We'd be looking at abandoning that, capping it off here so the fountain continues to have water. But, there's really no need to have water down and through here. The sanitary is in through this stretch. As you can see, there's nothing on the north, nothing on the south. We'd reconstruct the sanitary on Wood Street here to be able to serve anything that may potentially get developed in that area, try to clean up some of the city services.
You talked about that being a detour?
Yes.
Can a semi heading east there turn onto that road anyway?
Not right now. It can't.
What I mean, even if you reconstruct it?
If we reconstruct it, yes, it can. We ran a simulated model. This would be tapered here, but we do have the curb lines to be able to allow traffic or to allow a semi to be able to go through there.
Is there room for a sidewalk along there?
Along the west side?
Right, to continue it up from the bridge down?
We can, yeah.
At one spot, kind of worries me for some reason, right towards the top there. See a lot of kids standing right in there. Boy, they get into some really fast water there. I think that's for the canoe portage, isn't it?
The portage, yeah. This is a canoe portage.
Come underneath the bridge and then get out there.
Correct. Yep. They get out there, and then down farther by Maple Island Park, there's another portage where they can get in.
This might concern us. $300,000 for a detour, making this all pretty and then rerouting all that traffic on it, just beating the crap out of it. Laid that corner wider.
Leave a gravel.
Well, throw a layer down and let it get chewed up, and then when the project's over, come back later and make it pretty. I mean...
So, that's going to be a 9-ton road?
Would be, yes.
Or 10-ton, or?
We would make it a 9-ton because after the 27 detour, there's really no need for that heavy traffic on that stretch.
There's really no other option for the detour?
No. When we talked to MINDOT in terms of trying to keep traffic as close to the businesses as possible, this was really the only option to keep it reasonably close. The other option that they threw out was just detouring all the way up to Highway 10 in the background and essentially bypassing Little Falls altogether. And I know that's not something that the business owners want, and I don't think the city wants that as well of keeping all that traffic away from it. So, this is kind of what came up with that option or that discussion.
Hearing none. Resolution, call or roll, please.
We need a motion.
Do we have Gushak and?
That was for 81.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Lilljegren and Knopfler?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call or roll.
Zilka?
Yes.
Handfler?
Yes.
Lilljegren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2017-84, appointed commissioner of transportation, agent, federal aid participation, Little Falls Morrison County Airport. Laurie?
So, every couple of years, the state and the federal government requires that we pass this resolution so that the city can act as the paying agent for the Little Falls Morrison County Airport. So, this resolution would assign us as the fiscal agent.
What's the wish of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Knopfler, second by Alderman Hurcock, for approval of resolution 2017-84. Any discussion?
Just renewing what we had previously, correct?
Correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call or roll.
Handfler?
Yes.
Lilljegren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2017-85, decertified tax increment financing district, 1-23 Highland Court Town Homes.
So, the Highland Court Town Homes TIF district, which is 123, has reached its statutory maximum duration at the end of this year. So, we are requesting that the city decertify or the council decertify that TIF district, would then put the property back on the regular tax rolls and increase taxable value.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Gushak, second by councilmember Hanson, to approve resolution 2017-85. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call or roll, please.
Lilljegren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Handfler?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2017-86, internal loan funding, ABS, adopt. Laurie?
Recently, the city council passed or approved two new TIF districts. One is TIF District 1-40, which is for ABS. As a part of the tax increment regulations, we are required to pass a resolution that authorizes internal funding of the city. So, any expenses that we incur prior to issuing internal loans or internal funding or issuing bonds on the projects, we're required to pass a resolution that allows for internal funding of any deficits in the fund balance until such time as we issue the final loans for the TIF district. So, this would allow for the internal funding or the internal loan for TIF District 1-40.
What is the wish of the council?
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Alderman Hurcock, second by Mayor Zilka, for approval of resolution 2017-86. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call or roll, please.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Handfler?
Yes.
Lilljegren?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2017-87, internal loan funding, DJ products. Laurie?
Again, as I indicated earlier, the TIF regulations require that we pass a resolution authorizing internal funding for TIF districts up until such time, once we make expenses until the final loans are issued. And so, this would allow for the internal funding for TIF District 139 DJ products.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by councilmember Hanson, second by councilmember Lilljegren, for approval of resolution 2017-87. Any discussion? Hearing none. Resolution, call or roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Gushak?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Handfler?
Yes.
Lilljegren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2017-88, establish polling places, 2018 elections. Laurie?
We are required by state statute to establish polling places by the end of this year. So, this resolution would establish the polling places for next year's election. They can be changed at a later date, which we are doing some investigating on an option for one of the wards, but we are required to do this by statute by the end of the year.
What is the wish of the council on resolution 2017-88?
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by councilmember Knopfler, to approve resolution 2017-88. Any discussion?
So, we are going to have time to change Ward 3 as the school wants, right?
Yes, we're actively...
But, we have to have something in place now.
Yes, we have to. Yes, we don't have a firm commitment from an alternate location in Ward 3. We are in discussions with another, having a different polling location, other than Lincoln Elementary School, based on the request from the school district to move that location to a different place. So, we do have that. I think the requirements for the school district's polling, and I would believe they'd be similar to the city's, is that we have to at least 90 days prior to the election have that resolution passed with the new location. We should know, hopefully, sometime in January, if the location that we've made a request to approves our request.
So, who did that letter come from? The superintendent?
Superintendent of the schools, yes.
So, they would no longer have their referendum votes taking place at their building?
That would be up to the school to establish their polling locations. Right now, their process for any general elections for school board is they're at this time approving a combined polling location resolution, which means they're hosting the same polling locations as for their elected officials as the city is for ours or would be within their, you know, general location within the city limits. So, they have to, they're approving the same one. As soon as we would change, they would have to pass a similar resolution to modify theirs. So, if they were to do a referendum, I'm not entirely certain of their statutory obligations on doing a referendum election, if they have to host it at a school or if they can host it somewhere else.
So, their issue is safety?
That's their main request, yes.
Even if we have our resource officer there the entire time?
Because their concern is the accessibility of the rest of the school during the election because the election's held in the gym and the entryway to the gym does open up. As you walk into the building, you do have access to other parts of the building, not just the gym. I think between that atrium, you can access the hall and get into the rest of the school. So, that is their primary concern, making all the other safety improvements that they've made. I don't know if you've been over to Lindbergh Elementary recently, but they've completely redid the entry there. So, they, you know, do have that segregated entrance that you have to be allowed in before you get any other access, and usually, it's by check. So they, you know, do have that segregated entrance that you have to be allowed in before you get any other access and usually it's by checking in with the secretary office there. So that's their primary concern, that they don't want to create an opportunity for reduction in their potential safety regardless of the number of election judges or resources, other public safety resources that we could apply to this.
Plus, it's a disruption to the school.
Hasn't been for 44 years. Sixty-four, eighty, whatever.
You just get accustomed to having one day where everything's out of kilter.
Every other year. Give them a day off, they don't have problems with that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, resolution, caller roll.
Hercock?
Yes.
Gushick?
No.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hanfler?
Yes.
Liljgren?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
Resignation of Jason Spillam, Cable TV Review Board, accept, Mayor?
Yes, I received a resignation from Mr. Spillam from the cable board and I am speaking with some people regarding, there's two spots to replace on that. So hope to have that done in the next week.
Good luck.
I've got, I've got a plan.
Call in your favors.
What is the wish of the council?
I'd make a motion to accept with regrets.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson, to approve the resignation or accept the resignation. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign, motion carries. Otter exhibit at the zoo, support? They left.
No, they're still here.
They didn't give up that easy. Go ahead and scare them away.
So, Mr. Council President, the zoo, friends of the Triangrove Zoo are requesting that support from the city for their proposed otter exhibit. You do have, have been presented with the potential costs. The primary necessity for doing it at this time is so that they could order the glass for the project, which is the most significant project expense related to this, because it is, you're creating a visual exhibit that holds thousands of gallons of water for these otters to be, to live in and reside. So they are looking for the city's support for this project. I would assume by our previous ones that it would go into our zoo equipment fund for the cost that we would incur for this. They have secured potential donations pending our approval of the project or support for the project as well. So I, having had numerous discussions, they're doing an excellent job in trying to reduce the project costs as much as they can while still getting high-quality materials and work for the exhibit.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I would second, but I would like to add that we would much prefer to get an otter from somebody who doesn't capture it from the wild, but one of the other options.
Got a motion by Councilmember Gushick, second by Alderman Hercock, for approval. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, I just would add that, you know, I know it sounds like, to me, it sounds like a lot of money for glass. It's a huge project, a lot of dollars. I appreciate the fact that you're looking for other outside funding sources, that's very important. And thanks, you know, we talked earlier about volunteers and I know we have some great volunteers there and we have some great workers there and I know how hard you guys all work for your fundraisers and everything else. So that, you know, I weigh that in a lot, participation from other sources and from volunteers and the work that you guys do. So thank you for all the work that you do. And I think it's a great attraction that zoo is for the city. I went there, you know, I lived two, grew up two blocks from there and, you know, last, I think the last time I was there was only buffalo, maybe a couple of bears. And then I went last year or the year before with my godchildren and I was totally amazed at what that thing has turned into from the 1970s. It's amazing how time flies, but I used to have nightmares of the buffalo chasing me down that street. How it's actually quite the attraction, so.
That's it.
Laurie?
I'm just gonna ask a question if the council could clarify what support means. By support, are we supporting them to the tune of $2, $20, support of the project? Or, and I believe what they're requesting, what they're asking for, and please correct me if I'm wrong, John, but they're requesting the money to purchase the glass, correct? Is that, is that correct? So their request is for the hundred and...
Hundred and twenty-seven thousand, whatever it was.
So I just would like that clarified.
So you got that donation on the glass, that's part of another donation that sort of came in? Or are you looking for the total glass dollar amount, or?
The donation that is, that you saw listed is gonna come right off the top of the glass, the cost of the glass, so.
Okay. So it is for the lesser the amount, we'll purchase the glass, so we ain't gotta wait for a donation to come in to cover that?
No, they're gonna take it right off the top.
Okay. So the hundred and nine thousand one hundred.
And that's gonna come out of where, our improvement?
The zoo improvement fund, I am assuming.
Or the golf course? Either one, don't matter.
It's getting late.
The two that are in the red, go on to one of them.
What's a half million dollars between friends?
Or between budgets, you know?
We're just giving it to ourselves anyway.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign, motion carries. Get some glass ordered.
And ensure it.
And we're guaranteed we all can fit in it?
That three-foot hole? Maybe my head.
We'll push.
Greased it up well, yeah.
I can, you're gonna have to worry about yourself.
Wastewater Internship, Craig?
Yes, we've been approached by St. Cloud Technical College to provide an internship for an individual. Steve Hartzell is the one that's been identified as potentially being with the city of Little Falls. NJPA provides an internship program where they contribute up to $12 per hour for that program. We are looking at having Steve start January 8, 2018, to work down at the waste plant and the city being reimbursed for the $12 per hour by NJPA.
So that's what the wages can be, is $12 an hour, that's what we're looking at paying?
Correct, yep.
Actually, I understand that they're contracted, we are contracting with NJPA to provide the intern for us and NJPA directly pays them. Yeah, that's how the agreement works. Our contribution is to ensure that we're providing that intern with an opportunity so that they can receive the railroad skills that they need for either their academics or professional endeavors.
Perfect, how long does that, how long is that for?
He wanted to work at least a month, maybe a little bit more. So it's up to a semester is the way that NJPA has the program. So it could be one month, two months, three months, but he wanted to work at least a month.
Sixteen weeks is the maximum for one round of an internship program. They do allow for a renewal period as so long as they are then working on something that's different from the original, would be the original internship criteria. So I have an administrative intern, if she were to complete the sixteen weeks and we'd wanna bring her in as another, for another internship, she'd probably have to go and work at the wastewater plant.
You guys can just swap.
True.
Just have a helper on all the time.
That's right.
Bring this guy in good, fire up that oven again.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Alderman Hercock, to approve the internship. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign, motion carries. SEH proposal, approval?
Next item on the agenda is to continue working with SEH to do some trunk highway 27 modeling. This is a 3D modeling for the proposed bridge that we are looking at. We did a feasibility report of the bridge replacement there and so we're looking at getting a computer model of that so that we can illustrate that to the council as well as the public on what that would look like if we were to reconstruct that with an overpass over the railroad bridge. So we are looking at, the total project cost is about $7,000. We worked with SEH on the feasibility report, there's about $2,000 remaining on that feasibility report. And so they're gonna use those remaining funds, but they need an additional $5,000, up to $5,000 to complete the 3D modeling for that, for the project.
What is the wish of the council? Do I have a motion for some discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Got a motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Liljgren, for approval, discussion?
Who's all gonna see this?
When we have public hearings, anybody that's, or public input meetings, everybody that comes to the public input meeting, we'll have it at the council meeting. Anybody and everybody that would like to see it.
Yeah, this will be something we'd utilize on our website, we'd utilize during all public informational sessions, we'd take it to our legislators in terms of presenting them. This is gonna be the bulk of the visuals for how we're going to display the potential options for that great separation in bridge crossing.
Picture's worth a thousand words.
It is.
Can't we just take little wood sticks and build a bridge, like?
That actually, we actually looked at doing a 3D, physical 3D model and that's more expensive, so.
Take it over to the school, have it in our class.
Will that work for like grant proposals too? Can you submit those, that for like a grant proposal?
Yeah, we have, I am, I do have a meeting this week actually with Region Five. They have a comprehensive regional economic development plan. And within that, they identified six key vital projects for a region and ours, Bridge Project, is one of those. So we have been allocated some grant funds for this project. The list is, it was listed at $30,000, so we did not receive those for the feasibility work that we did. So I'm trying to ascertain what is gonna qualify us for receiving that project funding that they've identified in their comprehensive plan. So I hope that there are potential grant reimbursements. There would be if this project were to move forward. We do have preliminary costs that we could be reimbursed for if we were to receive bonding money or other finances to move forward with the project. So I think it's a worthwhile investment and the, excuse me, the visualizations are gonna be critical in our presentations to the public. Rather, you know, we saw the schematics and then the overlay over the pictures or over the aerial photos and, you know, they're showing the scale, the different scale and we're wondering, why is that bridge kinda go up so fast and come down so fast? It's, this would really give you, and what we are asking in the proposal is that they actually develop almost a little flyby through the design so that somebody can actually see what a potential, what this bridge could potentially look like in a digital form. So it will, you know, kinda take us through what that design options look like and all the way through the corridor that we're looking at, making those improvements. So it's, I find it to be a critical component of getting public input and buy-in from other stakeholders.
I think it's probably necessary for that, but they charged enough for the first time when they really have the data points from what they created, they just have to plug that into their program. It seems like an awful lot of money to do that.
We do have one addition to this though, is extending the route further down First Avenue Northeast to identify the entire corridor that could be impacted with a route, with a trunk highway alignment change.
All the way to the corner or the?
Yes, all the way to where the cut, it would be the punch-through, so it would reconnect back into about, between Seventh and Ninth Street. The other is the...
Sixth Street?
Sixth and Ninth, excuse me. This programming, this modeling is different from what their engineering specs are. It's a program called SketchUp and it renders things in that basically kind of augmented reality or 3D world. So it really is more of a, as you see it in the digital format, you are almost immersed in what's around you. So they could, you know, we could do, Greg, I think was trying to pull something up, but with a lot of the imaging from Google Earth, they, people have actually kinda built and designed some of the buildings in there, so instead of the flat map model, you do have some raised structures.
Have IT look at that tomorrow.
Bet we couldn't do a virtual ride, the whole feeling of it, seat of views.
It doesn't like me today.
Okay.
So it's, I think of the options to get visuals, this is gonna be the most cost-effective in terms of, with really tangible feelings to really showing what this realignment's gonna do.
And it's mainly for the proposed north realignment has...
You're gonna see more, yes, you're gonna see more of the impact with the realignment to the north than you would with just the bridge, I'll remove it and replace it in the same location. I mean, obviously with that, there's gonna be very little impact beyond the bridge itself and then the west side impact where it's, where it is raised up on that first block when it crosses the tracks.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Apoast, same sign, motion carries. Any announcements?
Just very quickly, MINDOT, it's, are not MINDOT, Coalition, who we speak highly of, been really keeping an eye on the greater Minnesota city, sent out an email today, I don't know if you read it down?
Yep, I did, I sent a comment back to Patrick Wydenman.
Okay, good. MINDOT, the legislature appropriated $400 million to be used on corridors of commerce, which was typically a 50-50 split between greater Minnesota and the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. And MINDOT is talking about switching that and finding, coming up with this formula where more, my understanding of more of the dollars, larger percentage will go to the, rather than greater Minnesota 50-50. They're gonna change that, so there's...
Looking at the presentations that they've released on their website regarding this issue, they're asking, is there any input to changing that, what they're calling a soft allocation of the funds? And as we understand it, it's not a soft allocation, it's 50% go here and 50% go there. And if you look at their requirements, they can't spend any more than 50% of the dollars once they reach that. So it's not soft, it's firmly distributed between the two. So for them to ask that question raises a lot of concerns on our part that they're looking for input to potentially get out of that allocation of funds. So please, if you got the Coalition's email, I will resend it out and the link to the comment, the person to send the comment to and just with my statement, I think a simple measure from a council member in greater Minnesota cities is to say, do not change this formula allocation to take money away from greater Minnesota would be important to do.
Any other comments?
Merry Christmas.
Nine o'clock, we will adjourn.